... I haven't heard otherwise. I think so. I haven't heard from that. What was that? It's just half the bank. That's what it is. I'll be my wife. But she don't have Corona, yeah. Don't. Oh, one. Oh, sorry. Hello, I have Corona, you need to order. Roll call please, sir. Mayor Kavanaugh?
Yeah.
Councilmember Yeats?
Present.
Councilmember Rej?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson? Councilmember Dickey? Councilmember Elsie?
Here.
Okay, number one on the agenda. Consideration of Resolution Twenty Twelve to S Eleven, approving the tentative budget as the final budget for the town Fountain Hills for the two thousand twelve thirteen fiscal year. And go to ten.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. Um, where we, um, picked up where we, uh, left off last week, um, again, um, the tentative was, uh, approved for thirty-one million, five hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. There were some changes that, um, subsequent to that, that we wanted to come to light and, and recommend, uh, um, a lower number. As you know, that you can't exceed the, um, tentative budget, but you, you can lower it from, from that. Reduction, the, so one of them is reduction of the law enforcement number that we originally had, a hundred and three thousand dollars. Eliminate the Arizona Department of Water Resources fee for the coming fiscal year, and there was a reduction in the HERF funding that we received, that we take the number from the League of Cities, um, to use as a budget number. So, we also, if you remember the last, um, work study that we had on budget, um, when Paul was discussing, uh, another capital project, he added this world, uh, Boulevard Engineering Study, so we added that back in. We also reduced out some grants for that, so the new proposed expenditures for a final budget recommendation, um, is thirty-one million, four hundred and nine thousand, thirty-five dollars. Uh, again, tonight, we're gonna go through a little bit of the budget overview, the organization and personnel, um, debt service, departmental budgets, um, the comprehensive fee schedule, and then discussion of the budget, of the, uh, bud- two budget resolutions. So, the organizational chart, as you know, it, we're, our, uh, within that second resolution that we'll be talking about at the end of the presentation, um, it talks about the final, uh, what I'm, what I'm looking for is the, uh, the approval by the council of the organizational chart that shows all of the departments that we currently have. There is nothing that's in there that increases any levels of, of, of personnel. It's all the existing employees we have, forty-five full-time, nineteen part-time. So, si- total of sixty-four total employees, uh, with the full-time equivalent of fifty-six point six one. As you can see, and you have in your packets, um, the, uh, adjustments, or the, I'm sorry, the administration department for, um, how it is organized, with, um, town manager, deputy town manager, finance director, town clerk, uh, human resources, um, and, um, economic development. Development Services is the same in the, in the five departments that, uh, that makes up the, um, Development Services Department. Community Services, and the number of services it provides, we'll go through those budgets as well. And then the municipal court, and how it's organized. Again, personnel and benefits, three million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. No new staff divisions, sixty-four total, as I, as I, uh, indicated, fifty-six point six one full-time equivalent from that. Pay plan includes forty-six positions, but there's forty-seven job descriptions. Reason for that is that there's two, um, executive, um, administrative assistants, executive assistants, positions, but their descriptions are different, for what their responsibilities are, so there's two different ones for, for that. One's in Development Services and the one's in town, town administration. Fifteen percent savings on the health plan, as we talked about in the, in the, um, work sections. Uh, regarding the budget, um, I'm continuing to recommend a two-point-five cost of living increase for staff. Um, with that, we're still, um, two percent down from last year, um, in total personnel and benefits, um, from last year's budget. Debt overview, again, the outstanding bonds, eleven million four. Those are the, the, the one bond is, the general obligation bond is for the open space and the doubt reserves, the, and the library museum facility, and then there's three years, and that's for two thousand and twenty. And the la- the community center has three years left on its, uh, its, its bond, which is a, an MPC, Municipal Property Corporation, which is funded by sales tax. So, again, with budget overview, we can start with that. We've been going through this for the last number of months. Uh, as you've heard before, there's been twenty-one different sets of books that were required, either through GAAP or through, uh, um, state law that requires how we, uh, set these, our government structure of finance, um, together. All sources of funds, thirty-one million point, um, thirty-one fours, as, uh, as I've indicated before. Um, and again, please, if you have any questions on any one of these line items, please talk to us now. Staff here to answer any questions that you might have on any one of these. Um, but the sources of all funds, everything from general fund, highway users, the excise tax, development fees, development, uh, debt service, public art, funds, special revenue funds, capital project funds, as well as the reserve, a fund balance. The graphs that go with that, um, all of its uses, again, well, we've, these are graphs, uh, charts that you've seen before. General fund makes up thirteen point seven million of that. Within that, local sales tax, shared revenues, to make that up, others, one point three, to make up the thirteen point seven. So, again, if you have expenditures in the, in the various departments, um, public safety, administration, community services, development services, and then the others, to wrap that up. Here's the projections we're, we're looking at for, uh, potential revenues that you've, um, the finance director put together a number of months ago to show you, projects out a five-year projection for this. Departmental overview, administration, we'll start there. Um, again, you've seen the organizational chart and how it's structured. Um, some highlights, again, we've talked about this chart before, it's eleven point six eight full-time equivalent within, within the, in administration. That's, uh, we're looking at a, again, a formal citizen survey, we're looking at some computer, um, upgrade, maintenance, um, upgrades and maintenance on it, and then we're looking at some contingency that's, that's within that, mostly of that was discussed previously, which was for the potential franchise that, that could come along. Um, that's where that is budgeted, should it occur. Remember, if you don't have it in the budget, you don't spend it. You have to wait till the next fiscal year.
I have a, a question.
Yes.
Of the thirty thousand for the survey, wasn't there some discussion with a citizen that had a less expensive way of doing a survey? Did anything ever come of that?
Uh, haven't had any discussions further on that. Uh, Julie, have you had anything, any further discussion?
Um, no, may I remember, uh, may I, members of the council, um, until the budget is approved, and we know that, that there's authorization for spending, then we'll work with the community and, and work with the citizen to be able to see to get the best price that we can, but we, we will have to put it out for bid.
So, we'll put the, we put the thirty thousand in, and if we do come up with something less than that?
Absolutely. It, it'll have to go out for bid, so yes, definitely.
Now, is included in this a, the, um, um, is it the franchise agreement? Is that a, um, is it gonna be, is that for a vote? Is that in here, or is that for an election?
Yes. And as well as any other, uh, I guess, does it talk, talk not only the rev- the, um, with any subsequent revenue that could come out of it for the fiscal year, or is it just for the election?
Um, may I, members of the council, there is included in the general fund budget an allowance for some revenue if there is a franchise election and it passes. But there is also, uh, a contingency amount, so in other words, it's not programmed to spend, because we weren't sure if Seppa Row Water wanted to move forward with it or not. So, yes, there is some revenue projected, but there's the offsetting expenditure as a contingency that multi-spends.
So, we're just waiting to see if Seppa Row wants to move with it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Um, any one of the divisions that's, um, within the administration, town manager's budget, information technology, town clerk, HR, risk management, finance, economic development, uh, legal services, um, that makes up the two-point-five million, uh, within there. Uh, if you have any questions regarding any of those, again, staff would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Ken, the three seventeen, three sixteen, legal services, is that included, uh, for town attorney and town prosecutor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Give you a little bit of, uh, more discussion, a little bit of discussion on economic development. If you look, uh, we're looking for a consensus-based economic development approach, um, for, for a plan. Um, this fiscal year, we're looking at the three initiatives, the downtown initiative, the tourism initiative, and the business attraction initiative. These are not new, these are actually in your, in the two thousand and ten strategic plan. Also talked about the EV one, which is to create a plan and a strategy that goes with that. Um, within those areas, we're looking at, um, the downtown is to start looking at a, a strategy on the implementation based on the area-specific plans, Wayback Plan, the ULI, the Hyatt Palmer, I can go on and on, um, about the plans that we have, that we like to try to put together, put together the, if you notice in the lower right-hand, left-hand corner, um, stakeholders that we need to bring into the room for the various initiatives, and start discussing, uh, again, for those. Uh, you'll notice that one point four million, those are the capital funds that are designated for the downtown area, should they be spent this year, but those are designated in that area. Also, the holiday lining that comes out of the excise tax fund for the holiday lining. Uh, I mean, it comes, um, on part of that, the tourism. We're looking at promotion and marketing, new events, uh, planning, um, from that, and the, um, hold on, give me a second. What I'd like to, to propose is that I'm moving fifty thousand, I'm moving fifty thousand into, uh, into that area specifically to, um, um, those dollars, the fifty thousand's intended for marketing and advertising for new downtown events to stimulate further tourism for visitor destination efforts, and, um, support the local economy. The, the town will utilize staff, both internal and external, uh, partners, to, uh, to administer these funds for promoting new events and activities. Now, the process that I'm recommending to you, um, is for proposal to be submitted to staff for analysis and presented to the mayor and council for consideration and direction or approval. So, any of that money has to be approved by the council to be spent.
Councilwoman Elsie?
Just to be clear, Ken, that, that would be any money whatsoever, even if it was below the twenty thousand?
Any, any, any of the fifty thousand is required to be spent by the council, uh, approved by the council.
Okay.
Um, I just wanna make a comment on this, uh, well, we had, uh, sat down and discussed, uh, economic development, and from Ken's experience, we, um, realized that there were quite a few plans, and if we could pull together the best of all the plans, and then go to councilman Yeats' office also, um, that we could finally get on to some sort of an action plan, and what we were gonna be actually doing to stimulate economic development, and Ken put this, uh, this plan of action together, which I, I think did a really great job. Councilwoman Elsie?
And I just wanna voice my, uh, opinion and support. I, I, um, I think the idea of using some of the downtown development funds, or setting those aside for a contingency of sorts for promotion and marketing, as Ken is, uh, recommending, I think is a good idea. Uh, certainly, especially considering any of those funds would have to come, or any spending of those funds would have to come before the council for approval, so I think it's, uh, I think it's a good plan. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. And, um, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Dickey? And the other part of that, um, is that, again, the money could be an internal project that we wanna have, so, um, kind of brought to mind when we had this intenio, or if it ends up being an event that's internal, then it's not necessarily, uh, an external, um, event, so.
Yeah, Mayor Kavanaugh, uh, councilmember Dickie, as me- as I mentioned, um, the resources for both in, um, internal as well as an external partner, that's what it'll be designed for, can only be approved by the council for any of the funds that be spent.
Councilwoman Elsie?
Uh, from, from a legal standpoint, would this be a separate fund altogether, would this be managers' fund, or would this be?
This would actually stay in, is it, does it stay within the economic development budget, but it's only, um, it's separated for that process, for the fifty thousand, as I, as I indicated.
So, it would stay in the excise tax fund until it was spent?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the, the, the third initiative is, again, the business attraction initiative. Uh, we're looking at the, the three, um, industry sectors, what they call the North American Industry Classification System, or NACs code, uh, fifty-two, which is finance, insurance, business sectors, go after businesses that can, we've got a number of offices that we need to start selling warm bodies in, and that's one of them that we can start keying in on and a focus for that. Uh, we also have the professional, technical, and scientific services, which is, uh, number fifty-four of the NACs codes, and then number sixty-two, which is the healthcare industry, one of them. What I'm recommending here is a focus on those three, so that our staff can then, um, have basically the, the, the focus to go after it and strategies to develop on what we should be doing and how we should be doing that. Now, with all of these, again, this is the funding that I'm recommending this year, but within those strategies, we need to talk about how we're going to do, how, what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it, and then we'll talk about how we're gonna fund them in the future. But bringing those, uh, bringing all those, again, those stakeholders together for each one of those.
Councilwoman Dickey? Thank you. Um, I'm wondering about some of the things that we're trying to attract in. I know we've gotten some correspondence lately about some conferences that were attended, and some, uh, feedback from GPEC, and some of the leads that they've identified, and then we get to the end of the day, and it's like, none of these are really appropriate or really fit Fountain Hills. So, I feel like maybe we need to be a little bit more scrutinizing on some of the things that we're trying to attract in and make sure they fit for the town, and not just the kind, the going thing of what other larger municipalities are trying to attract.
Yes, I, I agree, councilmember.
And I know, it, it's kind of on this, every year it seems like we kind of have the, the discussion about GPEC, and are we really getting, you know, something from them for that ten thousand dollars? Or perhaps would that ten thousand dollars fit better into the promotional marketing, new event planning?
It is part of the budget, it is funded for, um, there could be further discussion if the council wishes to discuss that regarding GPEC. We'd be happy to bring that forward, but it is budgeted for.
Uh, that was also one of my concerns, and I recently got together with, uh, the head of GPEC, Barry Broome, and we discussed, uh, some of, uh, what councilman Hanson has, uh, spoken about, that many times, the things that are spent at Fountain Hills are not a good fit for Fountain Hills, and we do wanna make sure that we maintain the small-town character that we have here. And he seemed quite willing to work with us, and Ken and I will be meeting with him. But we will, we will make sure that the money is well spent, not that we're going to give them ten thousand dollars and they're gonna throw us a few leads of, of businesses that couldn't possibly fit into Fountain Hills. So, we are gonna work with that.
I do wanna point out that within that membership, we do, um, comes along another program, CoStar, and, and I know that Lori maybe can help, um, define that, and maybe councilmember Yates could talk a little bit more about that. But we either buy CoStar by itself, which is, there's an expense for that, or we buy it within GPEC, because that comes along with the membership as well.
Councilwoman Dickey?
I, I would be interested in what kind of, uh, discount do they, do they give you for that package? Is it lump sum in the ten thousand, and it's just line item as an additional service?
Um, Mayor Kavanaugh, councilmember Yates, and members of the council. Uh, it is part of, uh, the package that, uh, they, that we receive as part of being, uh, a member of GPEC. Um, I don't know, uh, we, we don't get a line itemized, uh, you know, of, of what, you know, what does it cost them that they're passing along to us? Um, obviously, a lot of the other communities, just based on population, um, their membership fees are a lot greater than what Fountain Hills is. However, if we were to purchase on our own, um, the CoStar, um,
Subscription?
Subscription, with the same, you know, the same sort of, uh, subscription that we get through being a member of GPEC, it's about fifty-five hundred dollars, if we purchased it on our own, the exact same services from CoStar.
Hmm. Do they categor- excuse me, ma'am, do they categorize us as a municipality, as opposed to just a, a regular operating entity?
Uh, Mayor Kavanaugh and councilmember Yates, when you say they, who, who are?
CoStar, I, I, I have a package of both, and it's considerably less than that, but I'm, I'm wondering, I didn't ask the question, hey, I'm not a municipality, give me a broker deal or development deal, so I'm just wondering, and it might be, it might not be apple to apples, uh, either, so maybe at a later day I could see what's, what's included in the package that they offer us.
Mayor Kavanaugh, councilmember Yates would be, would be happy to do that. I, uh, contacted, uh, um, CoStar and asked them, you know, can you give me, whatever we currently have through our membership with GPEC, can you give me a price on that? And that was the price that they shot back.
Councilwoman Dickey?
Um, no, thank you. What is CoStar? Uh, CoStar is a, um, is a database of, of properties. Uh, actually, the subscription that we have is the properties, uh, within, I use it with, for the properties within the metro Phoenix area. But, um, uh, real estate people, um, you know, real estate professionals subscribe to that, and when they have a listing, actually, property owners tend to, um, they will include all the data on the property in a, um, in database. So, it's a web-based, interactive database. So, when we have inquiries, and I also keep, I, I keep separate files on properties on Fountain Hills, commercial properties, and, uh, so that, that I can go on there if things change, if the leasing agents change, if the, uh, properties change hands, I'm able to quickly see that, and then, um, contact them or call them. I'm also able to quickly see if, um, if a property has become available, or, um, or if it leased. And so, uh, we use that quite extensively. So, Mayor Lori, the, um, it sounds like those in the know are thinking that CoStar is worth it, so maybe, um, and we did have Barry come one time and sort of spell everything out, maybe at some point later on, we can, um, get a little bit of a better understanding of the other benefits of wanting to GPEC, um, which basically I guess would only be about forty-five hundred dollars worth of, of whatever that is, that's just to make sure that it's for that. I, of course, I always think it, it is just to have the, the connections and things like that, but, um... Whatever the council's desire is, I would be happy to, to do that should the council desire that.
Anyone else? Okay, Ken?
Thank you, ma'am. Just from a, since we are talking budget, I just wanted to highlight some things regarding the economic development program. Between the excise tax and the general fund, we have two hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Um, how that is split up, um, as you can see, it's the eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and four from general fund, but you also have a hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine sixty-eight from the excise tax fund dedicated to that. Um, so if you take that number, and if we take the fifty thousand and move it over from business attraction and put it over to the tourism initiative, we also have writing that we do for the, the holiday writing, as well as the Jumpstart Biz incubator contract that I, that we're recommending, um, as well for another fiscal year. That's a hundred and eighty-nine left. We have salary and benefits for one, um, half-time out of general fund, half-time out of the excise tax for it, so we have eighty-eight thousand, six seventy-six for the, the, um, business attraction portion of that.
Thank you, mayor. The Jumpstart Biz incubator, who are the other partners on assets, remind us, please?
Might wanna get Lori to extrapolate all, I will probably chop it up if I try to answer the question.
Uh, Mayor Kavanaugh, uh, councilmember Dickey, I hope I'm not gonna forget anybody. Um, obviously, the town of Fountain Hills is a partner. We do have the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce that is, that is a partner. And, uh, Mayor Kavanaugh, you might be able to help me with this too, um, and I, uh, Sternfeld and White, um, uh, law firm is a partner. Uh, we do have an, um, an accounting, uh, business in Fountain Hills that's a partner. Um, and I'm, I'm sorry, I just didn't bring that information with me, I apologize, but I would be happy to, um, send that additional information to the council. Those are the partners that I can think of off the top of my head. I apologize, I didn't bring that. Oh, thank you, Mayor Lori. I, I, um, I know that they were, you were meeting someplace, that that was a partnership, the actual company itself is, I'm sure, is operating in a... Meridian Bank.
Right.
Yes, right. So, it's just a good example, again, of some partnerships that were maintained in town. Thanks.
I believe they've already, have they set up a website which has all information about their partners?
Mayor Kavanaugh, they indeed have, and, uh, I was just working with them earlier, um, in the week, and I apologize, I just couldn't think of it off the top of my head.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, uh, there's the presentation by Jumpstart Biz for the schedule for the twenty-first, regular meeting.
Okay. Anyone else?
Um, and for those of you who just saw, Mr. Hughes came in, he's only, only has one arm. We won't, we won't get into that, but, um, you can maybe ask him after the council meeting. Community, uh, no questions on community partnerships? Going, going.
Uh, are we gonna go?
If you'd like to go through them, it doesn't matter.
I just had a couple of questions. I think that's through the...
Economic development tourism, one hundred and three thousand, two hundred dollars.
No, I don't have any questions on that one.
Any further questions on that one?
Yes, I, I do, I actually have a few questions. Um, I was, can we see the next screen with the stroke square, please? Thank you. Uh, I was just, wanted to know if there was anything else other than this one sheet that we have to, uh, give a little more of an idea about, uh, general production, workshop camp support? Do we have anything else other than this?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe in the, in the next part of the agenda, there's the whole proposal that they submitted in the packet. We'd have to get out of this presentation and get into it, which gives you exactly what they, their whole proposal.
Okay. And do we, do we have any idea, they say that, um, we're going to be getting advertising and promotional material, our logo is gonna be on it. Do we have any idea if the advertising is outside Fountain Hills, or is it just a playbill and things that are distributed inside? Do we know that?
Um, Madam Mayor, we're not, sir, but what we were pretty, um, insistent upon is that whenever there is any advertising, that we are listed as a sponsor, since we are not targeting any specific performance. It's going to be for the general performances, and so we insist that our logo goes on every piece of advertising, but I don't know where they go. I'm assuming they do some out of town as well.
And just one more question. Do any of the Fountain Hills kids that attend any of the camps workshops, do they get any kind of a discount because we, because we did this month?
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure of that, but I could find out for sure.
And that's all I have. Anyone else have questions? Yes, Councilwoman Dickie.
Thank you, ma'am. Just a general question about these contracts. Are they due to be on the twenty-first as far as the actual contracts themselves? Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Elke?
One of the things that we had discussed, one of the things we had discussed during some of the budget committee discussions was doing some cross promotional advertising, where we talked a little bit about what's the theater and the amount of folks that they have that come out there to take advantage of some of the advertising that they can offer, not just for the town, but other events and the things that are on within town. I think that's something that we should at least kind of explore a little bit more as far as the discussion and, and what the ultimate contract's going to look like, to see what kind of marketing that they can offer for other events and activities that are going on in town. I think that, that should be something we should look at also.
Okay, and I guess we also want to make sure that there's not the same marketing that the tourism's doing, that it's something different, in a different area.
Those two working together and sharing information, I think, would, would be very helpful.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Ken, just one more.
Sports Club is eighty, recommended for eighty thousand this year, as you can see the scope on what it was. Therefore, our staff will be happy to answer any questions. Food Bank, thirty thousand, two-fifty, with their scope, the same, I think that was in your dinner packets, will be happy to try to answer any questions there as well. Um, M C, I'm sorry.
Counselor Thompson?
I think last year, wasn't there the stipulation with the food bank that the funds would be used for the actual purchase of food? I thought that was-
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Hanson, you have me at a loss since I've been here ninety days, so I'll have to ask, have to answer that question for you.
Mayor, members of the council, that was what we had proposed to the group, but it became problematic for them to, because they get so much food donated, that we ended up negotiating with them to take that requirement out, because what would happen, it would jeopardize their, their funding efforts. And so they, they were quite concerned that if we required that, that they would then get less food, people would stop donating food, and so we took away that requirement.
So what is it designated for? Operations, or?
Yes, and they are providing, sorry, Mayor, members of the council, they are providing their statements because they have rent and they have electricity. So what they have provided for us, in addition to how many people they serve and all of that, they've provided to us their statements that show how much rent and how much utilities, with the assumption that that's what the town is paying for.
Counselor Dickie? Thank you, ma'am. Part of the discussion had to do is who is being served, and I think we were, we had that discussion that it was mostly Fountain Hills folks. The other part was the delivery of the food, which I think was acceptable. And then there was the discussion about the separation of, of activities, because there's a couple of different activities that happened there, so that we, I think we felt satisfied with the way they had separated, so I'm, I'm assuming it isn't, but that that is the same case this year.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's correct.
Do we have any idea how many people are actually using their service?
We do, they provide a monthly report each month of how many people, their age categories, their demographics, how many from inside Fountain Hills, how many from outside Fountain Hills. So they provide every month a very detailed list of who is served.
Okay, thank you.
M C S O Posse, there is a discussion about and recommendation for fifteen thousand dollars to assist them with their vehicle maintenance. They do have, obviously, they have some vehicles that are hand-me-downs and they require some maintenance, and we've, we've worked with them to, they would submit the bills for, throughout the fiscal year, to, to help maintain and repair those, those vehicles. Senior Services, we have a fifteen thousand dollar grant to assist us with the Senior Mills Program. Should the pop, the grant be funded and passed through, it would assist the program. And again, Jump Start Biz, forty-five hundred dollars for local business incubator. We do have, it is recommended for, for second year funding for this, within the budget, and we are having a presentation, uh, the twenty-first meeting next Thursday.
Counselor Elke?
Thank you. And the forty-five dollars for Jump Start Biz, wasn't, I, I have a recollection, maybe this is a story, that we are paying it quarterly. Weren't we paying something quarterly as far as the amount going to Jump Start? And was it a total of forty-five hundred dollars? Tell me if I had another number in my head, maybe I'm not remembering it correctly.
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Elke, the, the full funding for twelve months is forty-five hundred. This fiscal year, we funded them strictly from January through the end of June, so it was six months. So it wasn't forty-five hundred this year. And actually, we're paying them, it's three-hundred-and-fifteen a month, times six months this fiscal year, and we are proposing, it's in the budget, to be that same funding level, but for a twelve-month period.
Mayor, can I, do, can you extrapolate this for, for folks that may not know what that specific funding is going for?
The, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the council, the funding will be used to manage and oversee the operations of a, a small business incubator, and that incubator encourages entrepreneurship within our community and the surrounding areas. So the, the purpose is to help people who want to start businesses, start up their businesses, and they provide one-on-one counseling, they provide workshops, they act as a resource, and they also do that for our local businesses, so any local businesses can also take advantage of that. Today, the monthly workshops have been free to our local business sector, so if there's any businesses out there that desire to attend one of those monthly workshops, all they'd have to do is register, and it's free to our local business base. If anybody's out there considering starting a business, or currently has some home business, and, you know, wants to attend the monthly workshops, again, all they have to do is call and register, and they can attend for free. But the bulk of the funding is for managing and operating those, those services. Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Dickie?
Yeah, thank you. I don't think I do, Lori. I'll take two steps forward, one back. I'm sorry to go back to the home-delivered meals, the Senior Services Inc., was that the fingerprinting, the fifteen thousand? No? So that, they got a grant for that, right? No? I just wanted to make sure I have all the information.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, just to clarify a couple of things, the seventeen thousand that is budgeted for next year is for fingerprinting, but we did get funds, as you identified this year, I believe the amount was thirteen-five, to start that process, which we've done. So this fifteen thousand is specifically for home-delivered meals, and it's the grant that the Senior Services Inc. has routinely gotten each year.
Right, and then just, Mayor, the, that, we do staff have some funding of the staff for that, right? For home-delivered meals, like a half?
Correct, yes. The fifteen thousand does not cover completely home-delivered meals by any stretch, so it's balances paid for by the town.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Mayor?
Counselor Yates?
If I could jump in on the Jump Start Biz, the incubator concept is not an old one. I have a chopping strip downtown Phoenix where we were able to do an incubator space in five hundred square feet. There was one girl with one assistant. Within a year, she doubled her space and was paying for the second space, and I'm happy to say that within eighteen months, she now rents thirty-two hundred square feet, has five full-time employees, and is paying in excess of four thousand dollars a month. So it's, it's a very good project. I, I know there's a lot of unknowns with something like this, but how much Fountain Hills could really take advantage of this, and, and there are success, success stories. Thank you.
Well, I think as Ken said, it needs a little time to see if a program works, and one year alone is, is not enough, and what we're seeing in one year, is just enough to say that we should go on with this program and see how it progresses. Anyone else? Counselor Elke?
Plus, you know, telling Chief, it gives us the opportunity to say we're business-friendly, right?
I know, I'm business-friendly. All right, anything else? From council? No? Ken, wanna go on?
Um, if you don't have any other questions regarding administration and, and the partnerships, we'd like to go to public safety. Again, fire and emergency medical, three million, two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars, the activities for fire, suppression, emergency medical services, building, safety, fire safety, and, and the care program. We contract with Rural Metro through two thousand and fourteen, the proposed twenty-four thousand in the program, is for the, is budgeted for the care program. It also includes depreciation costs for the fire engines that we have. Within that is the different programs, fire administration, fire safety, fire emergency medical services, suppression and care. Be happy, you know, Chief Agreca is here to answer any questions you might have regarding any one of these programs.
Is the, is the twenty-four thousand, is that for a, a salary included in that, or what exactly is the twenty-four thousand?
Mayor, councilmember, that twenty-four thousand is a salary. We already have some small dollars in there for office supplies, fuel, maintenance on the vehicle that the town has for the care people. But that twenty-four thousand is a part-time salary in the Rural Metro contract.
Okay, thank you.
Law enforcement, three and a half, three-point-eight beats plus school resource officer contracted with the M C S O. Increases county benefits are passed on to the, to the town, to the contract, includes contract with county for also animal control and jail fees. Again, there's also that additional fifteen thousand that we previously discussed regarding the M C S O Posse for the vehicle maintenance that's within that. Programs are obviously the administration, animal control, incarceration, transportation, and patrol, that makes up the two-point-nine million. And I know that Captain Rodriguez is here to answer any questions you might have regarding any of that, and as well as staff.
Any questions? No? Okay.
Municipal court, five, full-time equivalent within the municipal court, the four-hundred-and-two-thousand-dollar, nine-hundred-and-thirty-three-dollar budget for fiscal year twelve, thirteen. As you can see with the different programs with administration, civil cases, criminal and juvenile. And I know that they're guys right here to answer any questions you might have.
Counselor Elke?
Do we have an idea, what's, what's the basis, or why do we see a seven percent reduction this year? You didn't think you'd get to sit over there by yourself?
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Elke, honestly, I, I had the same question for Julie. I don't know where it comes from. As I understand it, it was an accounting matter that, that created the, the seven percent decrease, because everything that we have is constant from last year to this year, with the exception of salary and benefits, and that's something that Julie and Cornell worked with, so that's where the discrepancy is. And I, I would assume that Julie could better answer that question than I can.
Mayor, members of the council, the decrease is because we have a new judge, and the new judge is at a lower pay than the other judge. Sorry, Judge.
You didn't know, huh?
We got it. Better deal.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, if you go on?
Um, from public safety, go to development services. As you previously saw, the organizational chart with Director Paul Moot and his department responsibilities for, for the planning, building safety, code enforcement, stormwater management, engineering, C I T facilities, and G I F. Two million, forty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars, eighteen-point-seven-five, a full-time equivalent personnel. It does restore the, the wash maintenance for a highlight, to, we have considerable maintenance, and a lot of those are washes throughout the town. Plan includes the restoration of facilities maintenance with all of our fiscal plan that we have. We have a, trying to bring it three-hundred-and-fifty thousand back to help with the maintenance and upkeep of our facilities. Household hazardous waste event, we have budgeted for forty-five thousand, it is within the budget for recommendation for that. The programs, again, the divisions are engineering, facilities, planning, building, safety, code enforcement, code compliance, mapping and graphics for that two, um, two million, four-hundred, forty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. I or the director would be happy to answer any questions regarding any of the divisions' budgets.
I have a question about the two vacancies. Were those recent vacancies that, because of the budget cuts, or is that just people that left the job? The one under street maintenance and maintenance tech?
Maintenance tech.
Mayor and councilmember, the street maintenance tech was a, a recent discontinuation of service with an employee, and the, the custodian, or the maintenance tech, we were looking at adding a additional halftime maintenance tech, just because of all the additional maintenance that we plan on doing. We've been working with, with some, Raymond Reese has taken over the facility supervisor position. We've been really good at contracting things out and been really efficient, so we're looking at possibly using the money for the vacant maintenance tech and contracting out weekend custodial duties for the library, museum, and the sheriff's office, because we have two part-time employees, and it's hard to provide seven-day-a-week coverage.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Community services, as you can see, the structure is presented before. Highlights maintains one-hundred-and-thirteen acres of park, seven-hundred-and-forty acres of open space, eight-point-four miles of trail. There is some other highlights, repair and stripe, the parking lots, the community center bond payment that we have in there as well as the two-point-two million-dollar budget. The divisions, recreation parks, community center, and senior activity center. If you have any questions, the director or any of the division heads would be happy to answer any within their budgets.
What was the reason for the community center operation decrease?
Mayor Kavanaugh, one of the reductions we did have was associated with, uh, reducing the part-time hours. And that was some savings there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor? No? Okay.
Special revenue funds, this is the catch-all, this is what we require, GAAP, state law. Grants, court enhancement funds, public art funds, these are the special revenue funds, the highway user revenue fund, of the excise tax, economic development, the debt service, and the capital project. If you have any questions regarding any of these special funds, I or Julie or department head that was responsible for any of these special revenue funds would be happy to answer any of your questions.
Counselor? No? No questions?
Just to highlight that, there's the H A R Street that makes up the highway user revenue fund for administration with the, the positions that we have, and a pavement management program that we do, it's what we have with the three hundred-and-fifty lane miles and the three-point-five million square yards of asphalt, and the sixty-eight acres of median that we maintain within that, as well as, I don't know, the multitude of signs and, and our street sweeping program, as well as traffic management, traffic signals, and vehicle maintenance.
Counselor Elke?
Ken, what are the, what is the twenty-one thousand, six-hundred for legal services? What is that factored in there?
Julie would be happy to answer that question.
Mayor, members of the council, a portion of the town attorney's charges are charged, allocated to H A R, because a lot of the contracts and things that they do are related to streets, so we charge a portion to the H A R, for the streets fund. That's twenty-five percent of what we protect.
Is that, that's a small, that's a percentage, or that amount is already factored into what the total legal services were that we discussed earlier?
Well, the general fund has a portion, and the H A R fund has a portion, so the two added together would equal. So there's, whatever's in there is about twenty-five percent of the total for just the town attorney, not the prosecutor or the public defender, which is in the general fund for legal fees.
Okay, so the general fund, where we show legal fees, that's not necessarily all the legal fees, or maybe- legal fees or maybe it's just this and H R. Is there, are there other funds that are being used to pay legal fees besides H R?
Uh, Mayor, members of council, no, it's just the streets fund and the general fund.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Could you, could you explain to me what the traffic management is? It looks like it's zero, but it has a decrease, what is that?
Uh, Mayor and councilmembers, um, the streets department has broken up with the, with the, um, employees. You might have twenty percent of employee in one area, thirty percent in another. And the, the traffic management, it was decided that that organization was going to go away and it basically just got rolled up into pavement and been the pavement management. So, it was just a
Okay.
Accounting.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Paul, go for it.
Councilmember Elke.
Thank you. Uh, with the street sweepers, as you see, we have the reduction there, uh, about twenty-three thousand, uh, um, from, uh, the previous year, um, that we, I think there's been some discussion, maybe we'll get into it a little bit later, the capital projects as far as replacing those street sweepers. Um, has there been any further discussion about that?
Um, no, we ran some numbers and, uh, have the information if it's about, if you want to discuss it.
Okay.
Any other questions from council? No? Okay.
Again, as I mentioned, six point seven five full-time equivalent, three hundred ninety million, I'm sorry, I'm just focused on that. Three point five million square yards of asphalt for that. Um, as I mentioned before in the previous, uh, the economic development side was one hundred eighty-three, nine sixty-eight as part of the excise tax, which is dedicated to the economic development side. And there's a capital improvement program, uh, again, we have twelve million and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. And I'm sorry for the small graph on there, it's somewhat hard to see. But those are the projects that are budgeted for within the, uh, the twelve thirteen budget. Be happy to answer any of the questions that I have on this slide and or the second slide that makes up the twelve million, um, for that. I will say though, that, um, four million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars of that goes toward, is out of the capital projects fund, which is our local fund. A million two, um, for, one million, two hundred forty-six thousand is, um, um, for the downtown, um, excise tax fund project. Fifty-three thousand out of that twelve million is from the general fund and six million is from non-town funds or grants. So, ha- over half, half of it is, is considered to be grant funded.
Questions from council? Councilwoman?
Um, just to clarify, we had gotten an update on the median improvements and where it was in the process. And I just wanted to, to make sure that I think when we approved, um, first portion of that agreement, it was just for the assessment of the, the median and then to come up with some conceptual plans. Um, and that while it is included in the budget, it's not a done deal, but we would actually proceed with the project
Correct.
Depending on the outcome of all these other things and...
Mayor Kavanaugh, uh, councilmember Hammond, that's correct. We authorized twenty thousand dollars only for expenditure for the, for a, um, review of the project analysis. And to bring that back for consideration for any further expenditures or, or furtherance of the project.
Councilwoman Edith.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, basically just, uh, because we, we're, we're the sort of agreeing because we've seen this a lot, but really the, the amount from the general fund, the four point seven is a little bit more than we usually talk about spending for a year, maybe about two, two and a half million. But, um, earlier we had a, a chart that took us out into the future where it was significantly under two million some of those years in a row. So, I think there's also comfort leveled in with spending this now with some of the recognition that, some of the things that we haven't been able to do in the past that we're trying to do now. But basically it does, uh, even out pretty well if you look over the next several years. And the other thing is the non-town funds, um, obviously aren't done deals. We might, especially for like the fire, uh, projects, um, you know, if we don't get the grant, we won't do that work. But, so this looks a little inflated, so this is sort of a caveat there.
And, uh, as far as the avenue median project, um, that's going to decide conceptual design, so it's going to be brought to the people first before anything is done?
Uh, correct, Mayor, councilmembers. We're, we'll be working on a master plan. We had, we finished up the questionnaire. Um, we're gonna, we've assessed the electrical, irrigation, had a arborist look at the trees, looked at A D A issues. Um, we'll be working with the, the consultants, um, some of the user groups that use the median more frequently. Um, we'll put together two concepts, go to the public meeting for more input and then bring it back to council. And at that time, we'll decide whether or not the council wants to move forward with the project or not.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Hammond?
Ken, I think it's important to, to keep it out there of that this is just a, it's a step-by-step process because I think a lot of people are thinking that as it's moving along and, and with the questionnaire, that it's kind of a done deal. And just haven't gotten two or twenty-eight pages of the questionnaire, um, the responses and comments. But there's, it's kind of a grab bag of all sorts of things, you know, like don't spend it on the median, spend it on the road, don't put restaurants on the avenue. I mean, it's, there's all kinds of comments. And I think as, as we get the public involved, which is great, that they understand that it's, we're looking at doing something, we're not doing it for sure.
Right, and you could explain the downtown fund one more time because I, I think a lot of people are, are under the, under the, um, impression that you could take the downtown fund and fix the war with it. But that's basically for the designated downtown area. Did you ever find out if any of that could be used for roads?
Uh, Mayor and councilmembers, I did not find any wording specifically in the policies that were allowed to be used for road improvements.
Okay, so it has to be done, it has to be used in the downtown area and that area has already been designated by the
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Elke.
Thank you. Well, uh, with, with respect to the downtown improvements, um, certainly I want to get all the, uh, resident feedback that we can and have all the, uh, the appropriate parties at the table and discussing what we're going to do to the downtown area, get all the students and input. And, um, I do think it's important that we do, uh, complete a project or do something with the downtown area, especially, um, with what we've seen with the development agreement, um, with the Casnow group and putting a movie theater downtown. I do think if that goes, um, we certainly want to, we want to create a sense of excitement in the downtown area. We want to have a place, a downtown area where people will draw to and hopefully businesses will want to come downtown and have a vibrant downtown, not have something that's closed down at eight o'clock at night. And I think that's, that's exceptionally important and I think the town can lead the way in that, and lead it responsibly, of course. Uh, and after we've gotten plenty of input from our residents, but I do think we need to do something. And, um, I, I, I'm, I'm really excited. I'm excited that we have this much money in the budget. Certainly doesn't mean we have to spend it, but, uh, I'm very excited about the fact that we're moving in a direction as, as I'm sure my fellow councilmembers have talked to businesses along the avenue. And most, a lot of the owners down there say, yeah, I'll believe it when I see it. I've been here for fifteen, twenty years and it is what it is. So, I think we really need to do something with the downtown area. Of course, after we get, uh, your appropriate research and get voter input or resident input, excuse me.
Any other comments, the council?
Mayor Kavanaugh, if there are any other questions regarding capital projects, there are the fee schedule changes and I might like to ask the finance director if she would kind of highlight any of these, of the changes. I believe they were effective January one, but this was previously, that was a previously approved, but, um, answer any questions that you might have regarding any of these, uh, the, 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 the fee schedule changes.
Thank you, um, Mr. Ca- Mr. Buchanan. Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, what you see in front of you is just the changes in the fee schedule. The fee schedule is probably fifteen pages long, but these are the only changes from what our current fee schedule is to what are proposed for July first. So, two of them, the development impact fees and the fire inspection fee have already been approved by the council. And the development impact fees were effective on January one as well as the fire inspection fee. The rest of these are proposed to be increased on July first of twenty twelve. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of those fees.
Councilmember Elke.
One of the questions filed from the public is about the, um, probate will assignment within liquor license. Can you just explain a little bit about that, Julie?
Um, yes, Mayor, members of the council, actually, it's, it's not a change in the fee because we have a hundred and fifty dollar liquor license fee. But what we did is when we adopted the fee schedule last time, we left off this one category that if somebody came in for a probate will assignment liquor license, we just left it off the fee schedule. So, we're not changing anything other than making sure that that's included with the liquor license fee, which already has the hundred and fifty dollar, um, fee.
So, for the, the impact fees, the, uh, residential's gone down?
Yeah, that's correct.
And the multifamily's gone down, commercial? Okay. Any other comments from council? Nope? Okay.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, again, there are two budget resolutions that I'm recommending. Obviously is the straightforward budget adoption resolution that, um, just for fiscal year two thousand twelve thirteen, it basically adopts the final budget per the state mandate schedule through A through F. But, but the second, uh, resolution that I'm recommending, um, is the, basically the implementation of the budget that provides for a consistent, uniform administration of the town's money for fiscal year twelve thirteen. All too often is that we, uh, we adopt the budget and then there's many interpretations of what was adopted, so, and how we, um, administer it, uh, procedurally, um, with policy. Um, so I'm recommending that, um, this resolution be considered because it, it, it deals with the, uh, how the transfer of funds, um, within the budget are, is handled, expenditure restriction policies, fund balance policies, general provisions for the employee positions that I'm, that I've, we've recommended to you, which, uh, approves the organizational chart, the current pay plan, the current schedule of authorized positions and job descriptions. It also delineates, uh, the, um, the, the matter of, of how any position can be created, consolidated, um, or deleted. And none of those can happen without, um, council approval. So, no budget, no, no position is being recommended here tonight that if, in the future for any combination of creation of a new position or consolidation or deletion has to come back through the council. That's within the re- in the resolution as well. It's actually in town code. Um, that's there, but it's kind of obscured because it sits in the bottom of my job description is where it's at. So, if you didn't read my job description, you wouldn't know it either. Um, it's not really clear on that part. So, we wanted to make sure that that was clear, that in the future, that any time, any one of these items happen, it has to come back to the council. We, um, again, it does supply, it does, does request a cost of living, uh, recommendation for two point five percent, a cost of living adjustment. And that does accept the town manager's position and the magistrate and the town council. The town council doesn't get two point five, want to make clear of that. Nor, nor does the town manager, nor does the magistrate. Contingency, uh, fund use policy and how it's administered, um, as well as the vehicle equipment, infrastructure projects, financial policies, which include the goals, the fund balance policies and guidelines, which also includes the rainy day fund, reserve, unreserve fund, special revenues, debt service funds and capital project funds. Also within the financial planning section is added talks about this policies and procedures and how we de- deal with that and how we comply with the state budget laws or, or A R F forty-two seventeen zero zero one. Also the expenditure control and revenue collection. Lastly, we have the user fee cost recovery policies and debt policy as well as the issuance of obligations policy. So, again, it's a, it's a further clarification of how we deal with the, the financial policies within, uh, within the budget that's adopted. It is a recommendation. So, finally with that is, it's, um, it's recommended that we, um, approve thirty-one million, four hundred and nine thousand and thirty-five dollars. Consideration. I'd be, department staff, myself would be happy to answer any questions regarding any part of the presentation.
Was there any questions from Councilman Lizeth? Are you still with her?
I, I'm certainly still with you and, um, I have no questions. Um, I want to thank Ken for taking us through there and, um, the qualifying questions that all the, uh, council folks, including yourself, Mayor asked. Um, I'm very comfortable with where we're at, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Any other?
Good job.
Councilwoman Edith, if there's questions here. Is the motion from before still on the table? How's that work? We moved, we did, we made a motion to approve resolution twenty twelve dash eleven at the last meeting.
That motion was unsupervised by the motion to continue, so we'll need a fresh one tonight.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion then to approve, uh, resolution twenty twelve dash eleven adopting the tentative budget for, as final for fiscal year twenty twelve dash twenty thirteen.
Second?
Uh, go ahead. Councilmember Elke.
Ken, you can ask me a couple of questions, please. This is, this is what's respect to the, uh, to the cost of living allowance increase, the two point five percent. Now, that's across the board, accepting the town manager and the, the, and the, uh, town judge and us, of course. Um, of course, they have contracts which handle as far as their pay is concerned, correct? So, the two point five, um, percent, that's across the board for all employees, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor and council, that is what's being recommended, yes, across the board.
Right, so it's not, it's not merit?
It's not merit, it would be more of a cost of living to kind of keep up with the competition as much as we can.
Okay, are there any other increases being proposed by staff other than the two point five percent? As you may recall last year, we did the one percent across the board, like it was a COLA increase as well, correct?
That's correct, yes. And there are no other increases being proposed at this time, just the two and a half.
Okay. Thank you, Ken.
Mayor?
Councilwoman?
Along that line, um, looking at that two and a half percent, I mean, we know that it, it certainly benefits higher paid employees more than the lower paid employees. Have we ever thought of, is there a way to somehow make it maybe a little bit more equitable and it wouldn't be referred to as a cost of living increase per se, but some sort of a, and it wouldn't be merit, but another way of increasing it that might be a little bit more balanced? And I don't really know how that would work and how it would go in pay ranges for the positions, but it's just...
Mayor and council, excuse me. Ken, do you have another proposal for the
Julie, could you put?
Fee schedule?
There's another set of slides. As you can see, with the two point five across the board, cost of living, sixty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, thirty-two dollars. Um, that's two, that's for everybody. And as you can see with the, the one tier which is below fifty thousand, which is, I think, forty-six percent of the employees and, and the seventy-five seven is the tier, which is the fourteen percent and the third is, is above that, which is forty percent. That's what was being proposed, um, that's what I'm proposing, uh, for sixty-six thousand, two thirty-two. Um, more in line with what the questioning was from the council. I think the discussions is that there's another, uh, you know, the three-tiered COLA that talks about a two and a half percent for the, um, lower paid, basically, um, salaried employees. Um, as you can see, uh, with those percentages, and its total is fifty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-six, which basically is eleven thousand dollars less than the, the two point five across the board. Mayor? One second, we...
Councilwoman Edith?
Ken, if you could, the cost of living right now is three percent. Not ratio, I mean inflation, I'm sorry.
I believe it was conveyed as three percent like it was last year.
And in the last four years, how often have we increased the salary? Once last year by one percent, one percent? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Elke?
She was along the same lines with the question, but, uh, the past two fiscal years or the past three fiscal years, any increases besides the one percent that, that we did last year? Okay, sorry, Ken.
Mayor and council, there have been no, you know, cost of board increases with the exception of last year. At the beginning of the fiscal year, we had a one At the beginning of the fiscal year, we had a one percent.
They had one percent across the board, and then the preceding year before that?
Nothing. We haven't, that was the only increase we've had since fiscal year oh eight, oh nine.
Now, that was across the board, but does that exempt, I'm sorry, mayor. Does that exempt any specific employees that may get increases, or does that include everybody?
It included everybody, again, with the exception of the contracted positions and the appointed positions like the judge.
Okay. One more question there. It would go back three years. Is there any increase three years ago?
In oh eight, oh nine, is that three years ago? That was then the last one, three years ago.
Do you recall what that was?
Uh, well, it was a merit increase. We had no cost of living increases, so it was merit, so it was based on performance. Everybody got, based on their performance, so it varied.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman.
Thanks, Mayor. I, I just don't see that we can really separate or delineate one employee from another, regardless of the salary range. I think the employees come to work, they all come to work, they all work hard. Currently, as we all know, they're working harder than they ever have because of the shortage of staff. So I, I, you know, I'm going to support this 2.5% increase across the board and not try to separate one employee away from another.
Uh, Ken, with this three tiered system that you have up here, is tier one, it's hard to see that, but is tier one, that's the lower employees, you said, right?
Yes.
And is that part timers also? Or is that the full timers?
Yes.
Yes. Because I know that some of our part timers make, you know, thirty dollars an hour, ten dollars an hour. They don't really make very much, and 2.5% is really not going to give them that much. Whereas if you're in the upper level and you get the 2.5, that makes a big difference in your salary. And I think some of our lowest paid full timers are about twenty-eight, maybe, is that right? Full time? Is that correct? Some of our lower paid, the lowest paid are full timers. Is that salary around twenty-eight?
It's around twenty-eight thousand, yeah.
Twenty-eight.
We have one employee like that.
So with this, this, um, three tiered, what you're proposing is that those, those that are making the least amount are part timers and the lower paid are full timers. We just get a little bit extra, especially our part timers that save us a tremendous amount of money because remember, they don't get any benefits. They save us a lot of money with benefits. So, so this is a, this is an interesting compromise to, you know, be able to give them a little bit more since they're saving us a great deal of money by not, by not having the benefits. Councilwoman Dicky?
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at that, it looks like the most anybody's getting is two and a half. So am I reading that wrong?
Well, the lower tiered is, what is it, fifty below, is, is a 2.5%.
So, excuse me, Mayor, the only thing we're doing here is lowering, we're not, we're not giving the low, the fifty-six, fifty-six percent more than two and a half percent. We're just giving other people less. So I would really more prefer the two and a half to everybody, if I'm seeing that right.
Mayor Cavanaugh, members of the council, again, I'm sorry, I probably didn't explain that correctly. Again, the fifty percent, anyone making less than fifty thousand is two and a half percent. That's fifty-six percent of the employees. The, anyone making over seventy-five, I'm sorry, under seventy-five would be getting a two percent. That's thirteen percent of the employees. Anyone that makes over seventy-five would get a one and a half percent, which is twenty-one percent of the employees. Again, when you add all that up, it's fifty-five thousand, one sixty-six from the previous, the one that's being proposed and recommended. Of sixty-six thousand total, it's eleven thousand dollars less.
Councilwoman Dicky?
Thank you, Mayor. And that is what I was thinking, and I just think we ought to go with the two and a half to everybody then.
Any other discussions? Councilwoman Hanson?
Well, unless we calculated the percentages to aim for that sixty-six thousand mark and not reduce the overall amount that is being used for the increases.
Ken? Dicky?
Well, I'm just wondering how you would, help me, how would we do that?
You said a 1.5, maybe 1.75 or something. Just go up incrementally until you get up to sixty-six thousand dollars.
For which area? You talking about for the twenty-one percent of the, the 1.5? Or both, 1.5 and a 2.0?
The ones within the twenty-one percent and the thirteen percent, I can't see the little numbers, so I'm.
I'm sorry.
I'm challenged, but.
I was looking at it slowly.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, if you want to, I mean, if I hear you correctly, then Councilmember Hanson, you want to increase the 1.5 or the, or the 2.0 to whatever matches the sixty-six?
Right.
Okay.
And I know other communities have been grappling with this this year as well.
Um, yeah.
Looking at increases and.
Excuse me, Mayor, Councilmember Hanson.
Hold on, one sec. Councilwoman Hanson still has the floor here?
That's okay. I was saying that we're not alone in trying to figure out how to be more equitable in compensating our employees.
That was it? Councilman Elke?
So, you know, if I were an employee in the town and regardless of where my pay scale was, if you, if you told me that because I make a little bit more money, maybe because I have worked harder to get to the level of the employment that I'm currently at, if I'm not going to get the same pay raise as everybody across the board, the very first thing I would do is clean my resume up and go out and look at the towns, Tempe and Paradise Valley and Scottsdale that are hiring. And I'd lay it on the table and just say, hey, listen, it's not fair in Fountain Hills. And, and please keep in mind, we almost lost one of our very best employees. And I would hate to think over, over one percent of a pay raise for an employee, we would want to let one of our people go. And I, I will not support that at all for anybody, period.
Councilman Elke?
It is, it is a difficult thing. And what we are talking about here is sixty-six thousand dollars. I have a significant budget. Just looking historically, just taking everything in total as far as the past years, if over the past three years or more, that there's been a one percent increase, albeit because of the economy and what we've been going through, you know, I just don't think that it's worth splitting hairs over six, you know, the difference between sixty-six thousand dollars. When we're talking about eleven thousand dollars, the difference between option one and option two, am I getting that right, Ken?
Yes.
So we're talking about eleven thousand dollars. I just don't think that the eleven thousand dollar savings would perhaps be worth the angst, animosity, lots of employees, I don't know if we would lose anybody over that or not. But it's just, it's just eleven thousand dollars.
I, I think that Councilwoman Hanson wants to clarify what she said.
To me, it's not decreasing the dollar amount. In fact, if we're looking at this, then why don't we say for fifty-six percent of our employees, go with the two and a half, wait a minute. For the twenty-one percent and the thirteen percent, let them be at the two and a half, but then maybe go to 2.75 for our fifty-six percent. To me, it's just, it's not, the dollar amount so much as it is the making it a little bit more equitable. I mean, like. Henry.
Ah, Councilwoman Lizeth.
Hey. I'm here. If I may, I think equitable is giving everyone a slice of the pie, two and a half percent. And I would agree with what I've heard in that regard, that people work equally as hard. I think someone who takes a part-time job or a lower paying job, they take it, they understand the parameters, they understand the pay scale. I don't necessarily punish someone because they're in a higher pay range. And as has been stated before, we have several staff wearing several hats. And a lot of that is happening at the administrative level. And I think if, if I heard our H R administrator correctly, the Ratsbells are moving in this direction, it's to stay competitive. I'm not sure if anyone's read recent articles in the Arizona Republic, Go Fort and So On, is that most municipalities after years of austerity are in fact looking at throwing some money at this situation. And I, I think it's not equitable to start discriminating across classes of employees. And with that being said, I would move to approve what has been recommended, that is a 2.5 pay increase across the board for, for all staff members. Thank you.
Any other council comment? No? Is that it? Is that a signal?
No, I was, I was just saying, if there was a motion on the table, I think that was already moved as part of the original budget, right?
Well.
Are you asserting motions again, Henry?
Was that a mo, was that a mo?
No, no, I'm not. I'm just replicating what we did at the last meeting where there was some controversy that to make things perfectly clear, according to our town attorney, except it is a separate motion. So if we don't need one, I'm certainly, I'm certainly fine with that. If we need one, then I'm making the motion. So, if it's part of your question, thank you.
Right, interestingly, we have two proposals. Do we need a motion to pick one of these, or what do we do?
Mayor, the current proposal that's recommended in the budget is the uniform across the board. In order to change that to a different proposal, you need a motion to change it. Otherwise, the original recommendation's in there.
Thank you. So are we making any other motions then? No?
Because I'm not in favor of lowering the amount.
Did you want to make a different motion, or?
No.
Councilwoman Hanson, no, okay? All right, then, we're going on to, Ken?
Madam Mayor, there's a motion we need to vote on.
Uh, do we have any, do we have any speakers on any basis?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, then, just one more thing. Just jumping back to the administration department. And since I do this every year, I didn't want to go through this budget cycle without doing it again. Um, every year, we talk about the value of our volunteers. And we talk about enhancing and maximizing our volunteer program. And since we are looking at the organizational part, I'd like us to consider at least having a discussion of our volunteer program and where it lives in the organization and what it does. And I found this publication, actually, an I C M A publication, Build a Successful Volunteer Program to Drive Growth and Recovery. And there's a lot of really good points in here on how to come up with a management plan for your volunteer program. And I'm not necessarily suggesting anything at this time, except maybe seeing if we have a consensus to at least ask the manager to assess the program, assess the position, and see if we could make any changes in our organizational part in the future that would help to come up with a, a management plan for the volunteer program and actually grow the program, which we don't really seem to get done, even though it's a priority in our strategic plan. It's mentioned numerous times that we want to maximize our volunteers. So I'd like us to really, you know, rather than just say it and give lip service every year, give it some earnest effort on, on what we can do with it. And I would pass this down to you if you would like it.
Sure. Mayor Cavanaugh, members of the council, I'd be happy to provide a management plan during this fiscal year looking at our volunteer program, if there's any possible enhancements that we can make to it.
Councilman Elke?
Thank you. I agree a hundred percent with what Councilmember Hanson has said. I think we should be allocating more time, at least staff time, to our volunteer program. It's a huge resource in town and considerable savings to, to the town. So I think any monies or additional hours that we can allocate to, that would be a good move.
Councilwoman Dicky?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, Ken, I don't know if I gave this to you already, but I know I talked to Heather about the, um, the program, which of course I'm forgetting the name of right now, but it's, it's actually a trading of hours, not necessarily what, you know, what you're doing, but we actually talked about attorneys giving legal advice or giving free, don't look at me that way, um, giving advice for an hour or something, and then somebody else goes in and bases it for a kid or that kind of stuff. So it's actually, the time is equal, and I think Heather was here before, but I don't remember the name of it, but I do have that, and it's like a packet and like, kind of like a kit on how to do it. So I'd be happy to kind of do that, too, if that helps with the program at all.
Mayor Cavanaugh, members of the council, Councilmember Dicky, I'd be happy to take that as part of the review as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I also agree that we need to look at the volunteer program because I know since I've started, I've already asked Heather to work on two projects with me, that ideas that I have, and that would include volunteers. So I think we're, we are depending more and more on our volunteers, and they're certainly saving us a great deal of money. And so we really, we really do agree with Councilwoman Hanson that we should look at this. We could put this on a retreat and make this discussion for a retreat. Councilwoman Hanson?
Thank you. And it is interesting what they do in other communities, like in Toria, Tempe, and, oh, where else was it? Scottsdale. They have the department under community services. And some of the other jurisdictions actually have them reporting to assistant city managers as well. It becomes more of a standalone department, almost. And I think we just have a lot of potential there. And, and oftentimes, it's an exempt position, too, so they're not constrained with, like, when there's different events. If there's events during the weekend, you don't have that time constraint on their time.
Any other discussions from council? And you've got some great start to some good ideas for our retreat. And this time, we'll, we'll, we'll make the changes. And now we have a motion and a second. And we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lizeth?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Dicky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Mayor Cavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
Now we'll go on to number two, consideration of Resolution twenty-twelve eighteen, providing general direction on policy administration of the adopted 2012-13 budget, adopting the Fountain Hills organizational chart, the authorized full-time positions with associated job descriptions, and the fiscal year 2012-13 pay plan. Ken?
Members of the council, again, Resolution number twenty-twelve dash eighteen gives you, um, there was my second. I just lost my place. As I mentioned previously, discusses all of the items for transfer of funds, expenditure restrictions, fund balance, it goes all the way through, as I mentioned before. Again, as you, as you indicated, Mayor, it adopts the organizational chart, the current pay plan, the current schedule of authorized positions and creation. It also, as I mentioned before, it also is explicit that any creation, combination, consolidation, or deletion of a position is required for council action. I'd be happy to answer any other questions regarding that resolution.
Questions from council? Uh, question, a motion?
Some of them.
Second. And no one speaking on this? Okay. Any other council discussions? The only thing I want to reiterate to the residents is that anything that's, that's in the budget, it doesn't mean that we have to go forward with it. It just means that it's there. And if, and if we decide after published input with all these projects, there would be a vote then to go ahead with it. So nothing that's in here says that we have to do it. I know a lot of people are panicking about what they saw, that it was already a done deal. deal, so anything that's in here can still be changed, it just means that we can't do any more than this, or go over the amount that's in the budget. Any other council discussion? No? Then a call for the votes, uh, best roll call, please.
Councilmember Elke?
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson?
Hi.
Councilmember Yus?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lizeth?
Hi.
Councilmember Brown?
Hi.
Councilmember Dicky?
Hi.
Mayor Tavna?
Hi.
Mayor Seven Zero?
And that's, uh, just need a motion, so we're done, then, we're done.
Some of them.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lizeth?